Email's more closely.
Sound like like Carl Singer.
Mayor, it's 5:30 if you'd like, 4:30 if you'd like to start the meeting.
Are we on the record?
Start.
We are on the record.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. It is Tuesday, March 4th at 4:30. The City Council is in session. Let the record show all members are present. And we have a motion to retire to a closed session.
Before you do that, we do have one speaker card.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize.
Because this is real property negotiations, I just need to.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I just need to read the terms of the real property negotiations. It's discussion, discussion concerning real property transactions in compliance with Government Code, Section 54956.8 regarding real property negotiations, APN 701-041-06, 701-041-52, 701-041-55, 701-041-58, 701-041-59, 701-041-62, 701-043-07, 701-043-08, 701-043-09, and 701-341-02. Properties located near the Eastern Terminus of Avenida Pico in the city of San Clemente. City negotiators are Andy Hall, City Manager, and Adam Atamian, Community Development Director. Negotiating, negotiating parties, Foothill, Eastern Transportation Corridor Agency, Talega Associates LLC, and Talega Maintenance Corporation. Under condition, under negotiations are the terms. And we have Amanda Quintanilla as our speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading that. Let's hear it from our public speaker.
Sure. Megan, I think this is just a quick slideshow. Next slide, please. So we were grateful in 2023 when a San Clemente resident came and alerted us about plans on TCA land in Talega. And so residents sprung into action. A group of people put a petition going. And there was a group of us who fought the toll road that did research because the petition alleged that the TCA wanted a battery farm, which was not true. We searched through, I went through agendas going back to 2016, and none of us could find anything, say, you know, that involved the TCA and the battery farm plans. And so, but a person from our group, a great researcher, she found this revocable offer dedication, which basically it was a, it's an easement that allowed the TCA to be on Talega property. And within a certain amount of timeframe, which is seven years, that they were able to get that land back if they didn't do anything. And so, next slide, please. And so basically, you know, it talks about a temporary construction easement, HOA, temporary construction easement. Next slide, please. But the main point and the concern that I have is that this is a document that has been reviewed by a couple of attorneys that I know and that one of the co-founders of the grassroots movement looked into as well. And it was determined that it should be, this land should be going back to Talega Maintenance Corporation, Talega Associates. And the concern is that why didn't, why, why doesn't the Talega residents know about this? And I think it's about transparency. You know, if there's any negotiations, I think it should come before those boards and let the people there, the residents in Talega, know about it. You know, I've spoken to a couple of residents from Talega in the last couple of days and weeks, and they didn't even know about that. So I'm really concerned about that. There is, you know, there is a fear and, and basically plans. There were some plans for a Talega battery farm in Talega and also on Bellic and Alina land. So it is something that we really need to pay attention to. However, I really don't want that the residents of Talega are bypassed, and I hope that their rights are preserved. And I certainly don't want a class action lawsuit for the city because they weren't just, there wasn't proper disclosure that this land should go back to them. And they have the means, Talega Associates and Talega Maintenance Corporation have the means to get this land back. And so I just hope that this is a very open and transparent process. And unfortunately, it doesn't seem like it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Okay. Entertaining motion.
I move to. Let's move to closed session.
I'll second that all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's go into closed session.
We can go, yes.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. This is the March 4th regular business meeting of the San Clemente City Council, it's 5:30 PM on March 4th. And we were going to call this meeting to order, and let's begin with an invocation by Holland Davis, pastor from Calvary Chapel, San Clemente, right ahead, sir.
All right. I want to begin by praying a blessing out of Psalm 20. It says, "May the Lord answer you in the day of trouble; may the name of the God of Jacob defend you; may he send you help from the sanctuary and strengthen you out of Zion; may he remember all your offerings and accept your burnt sacrifice; may he grant you according to your heart's desire and fulfill all your purpose; we will rejoice in your salvation; in the name of our God we will set up our banners; may the Lord fulfill all your petitions." And, Lord, we pray for your wisdom, we pray for your protection over our esteemed leadership, Lord, those on the city council, those that support the city council, Lord, that ye would watch over their families and their businesses, because we know it's a great sacrifice on their part to serve our city, and we are thankful for them, we ask you bless them abundantly. And in the issues at hand, give them great insight and wisdom, we thank you for them, in Jesus' name, amen.
Mr. Renmaier, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record show that all members are present, and this is no special presentations today, and let's begin with the council member reports, Mr. Wu, would you begin for us, please, if you have any reports to make?
Yes, I have a little. I met with the Doheny Desalination Project team, received more information about their proposed project, attended a groundbreaking ceremony for the pump track, continue to meet with department heads, including finance and recreation departments, attended a county supervisory visitor district of five meeting, and the topic was pickable, of course. And I attended a online briefing with the League of California Cities on the bills they are sponsoring. Thank you.
Yeah, also attended the groundbreaking for the pump track, and Stevie did a great job of emceeing that. It was a good event, had a lot of people there. They're already bulldozing it down. We should see that in a couple of months. I think we're going to be really close to having it.
Are we going to have a contest when it gets built?
You mean you and me on tricycles? Also, I went to the luncheon, the chamber luncheon that gave out the annual awards, and Business of the Year was Los Molinos Beer Company. That's awesome, if you go down to their brewery. Citizen of the Year was Iliana Farias, and she's done some incredible work. She works with the dancers for Clo- for Cloco- oh, boy. Yes, exactly, Victor, thank you. And I think Cinco de Mayo event's coming up here like May 3rd or something, Saturday, and come down, and she brings all the dancers out. She's tremendous. Outstanding Lifetime Achievement was Sparky from Rainbow. I can't believe he didn't get it before this, but he was the, I'd say, Lifetime Achievement Award. Nonprofit of the Year was the San Onofre Parks Foundation, and what's, they did such a great job in extending the contract at San Onofre Surf Beach, getting another 25-year contract. So that was well deserved. Ambassador of the Year was William Scott, and Will Scott's been great in helping the Chamber with a lot of IT stuff and bringing them up to the 21st century. And Sustainable Leadership Award went to the owners of Pronto Cusina Italiana, the market down there on Del Mar. I guess they do a lot of great things with recycling and whatever, that they're really at the cusp of technology there. Also, I want to thank the deputies. OCSD has been really, really visible down at North Beach. Every time I go down there, I pass a deputy. I was down there a couple of nights ago at 10 o'clock at night, and they were down there walking on the beach. Incredible, good job, chief, really, really appreciate it. Want to say also, a day after last council meeting, and I heard there was an OD, and I was really concerned about, you know, who might have to see that was actually the surf team went down to North Beach and came across an OD. And I'm so thankful that, you know, Zen and Steve and Mark, that these kind of things don't happen in your neighborhood, that your families don't have to be exposed to that. Only people have to be exposed to it to people in North Beach, and it's really, really unfortunate. Also, we had a shooting last weekend. The Vario Viejo took some shots at Varios Chico, and I guess these two gangs have been warring since the 50s. Luckily, there was nobody injured. I want to thank the deputies again for a quick response. All suspects and all weapons were taken into custody a short time later, and this is what we look for in our police department, is to respond quickly, act quickly to a positive conclusion. So again, I want to thank OCSD.
Actually, Mark and my neighbor did have a death situation over, a homeless man was found deceased right off Del Cerro, and I was there when they helicoptered the body out. He'd been there for probably a month. It was a very unpleasant situation. A lot of the neighbors there were very concerned about what's going on in our canyons, not only in North Beach, but inland as well.
It's actually Marblehead.
Yeah, it was on Marblehead HOA property, by the way, yeah.
But, yeah, that's a good reminder that, you know, we're here for the entire city, and what's better, for the entire city.
All right, thank you. Mr. Enmire?
Sure. Just like several of you, I was also at the groundbreaking for the SC pump track. It looks incredible. I'm really excited to see it come to fruition in the next couple of months. Had a meeting with our new captain chevalier, was fantastic, excited to see his plan for San Clemente. Also, just a side note, there's a Girl Scout troop coming around here on Friday. They might want to say hi, so. Also had the, did the Doheny Desalination presentation, find out more information. Couple Saturdays, was it last Saturday? Last Saturday? No, two Saturdays, Saturdays ago. At San Clemente Day, we, Steve and I were at the fishing derby, that was great, and then later went to the Aquatic Center, and fantastic family fun there, that was great. My kids enjoyed the Aquatic Center very much, and some good fish caught there, too. Also had a meeting with Compass Energy Storage Project in San Juan Capistrano, learned more about their project, and then had the Cal Cities Coastal Cities Leadership Group, where we talked about several new bills coming up in the state legislature, including SB 346, which is about short-term rentals, AB 996, which is about streamlining our local coastal plan, or LCP, and AB 650, which is about streamlining our housing element. Also, there is litigation going on in the state, the Casamira litigation, talking about what constitutes an existing structure and what power and authority our coastal commission has in relegating coastal structures or not. And Cal Cities, with the support of the Cal Cities Coastal Leadership Group, joined in an amicus brief with that. So, all right.
Thank you. Mr. Garol?
Yeah, let me start, I mean, all the same things, the chamber, very nice. I think a few of us showed up at that. I didn't make the pump trap, but I hear it's good. Interesting, I wasn't invited to the Doheny project, so I didn't get briefed on that. But would like to. Let me start with one of the committees, OCFA, as we should be hearing real soon from OCFA, our new numbers. I don't know if they're public yet, but it'll be real interesting, you know, there's been, I think, a 4.5 increase in our fees. And the other thing that we had, I've been to two meetings that they've had, one of them was the appointment of all the committees and chairs of the various committees. I was appointed to the Human Resources, the Legislative and Public Affairs, and the Capitol Improvement for the Orange County Fire Authority as one of the newest Board of Directors. Our new county supervisor was replaced, was also put on several of those same committees, Janet Nguyen, and she replaced our current supervisor on the board of the OCFA. We had a number of issues that we took care of, that won't bore you all with, but the most significant one is we, we had, we finalized our labor negotiations with the Management Association. And I say this stuff only so that the public knows, you know, what's going on with that. We had a SONGS CEP members meeting, and one of the things I wanted to disclose, because it was in the news, or if it hasn't been out in the news here, it will be, there was a small noncompliance here in San Clemente at the nuclear facility where it led to a violation, a minor violation, but the public should be aware, and the committee is trying to be transparent in all this. During December to February timeframe, two events involving welding, and the third event involving torch cutting occurred, didn't lead to a combustible fire, but the fire people that are there observed what was taking place, and there was an incident that went to the NRA, and the public should know whenever there's an incident that happens on that facility. It's important to keep the public up to date on that. As the vice chair of the committee, we have our next meeting on March 20th. The public is invited to attend. If anyone is interested in a tour of what we're doing there at the SONGS Nuclear Power, they're always available, and you can see how the deconstruction is happening. I'm closely monitoring, along with the leadership, what's happening with, in Washington DC, with the Department of Energy, with the cutbacks that are happening across the country. Some of the cutbacks affect the management of this facility and what's going to happen, where the money goes, and what money's available and not money. So what's happening in Washington DC still does affect us here at our local facility. Had a meeting, the other committee I'm involved with is the Marines had a meeting with, one of the Marine groups have another meeting with another Marine group, but the Marine, actually a third, we had a 2-1 event, which I was invited to at dinner for their send-off, and I think they left last week. It was a fabulous event hosted by Mark Zane at Bella Colina, and it was, hopefully, someone will come and talk a little bit about that at the comments period. The second thing, I had a meeting with the new, our advisor to the city, I think he's Colonel Palham. We had a great conversation about a number of the issues, our relationship with the city, trying to materialize and develop that relationship so we know better what the Marines are doing in our city. We've also set up a meeting, I think for this week or next week, with the new leadership of the CPLO. Marines always use these acronyms for it, but essentially, it's a leadership that develops and maintains all of, everything that happens on that basis. We, they organize it, so we are going to take a look and talk about the fire danger, the state park leaves, security measures, what they're doing with battery storage, and what they, what we can do with sand replenishment. And we have a meeting, because we're trying to use their beaches for sand replenishment, so we're going to have a meeting with them this week to discuss that. Had a meeting with the golf course committee, where, as you know, we're redeveloping the golf course master plan. That master plan is going to involve some changes to the golf course and the range. It's a two-year process, we're just starting it. The community is invited to take a look at all this stuff online. It's got to be exciting, and I encourage people that are interested in that to look online to see exactly how that's going to happen. I had a meeting with the Downtown Business Association, their new leadership, reached out to one of the persons that communicated with us last week, Mickey Rathman, who's the owner, trying to get the communication back on track with the Downtown Business Association, figure out what issues they drive them, what they want to do with the downtown business, and trying to get all the community together to come to us and say, this is what our priorities are. So hopefully, in the near future, we'll be able to figure that out and have better communications. Had a meeting with our group, another one of these organizations, the Cal Cities had a briefing for us on, about a dozen pieces of legislation, and I won't get into the, all the legislation, you've talked about some of them, but it's all preliminary right now, so we don't really know what's going to happen, and it's appropriate time. If there's something that develops further that requires our attention, I'll bring it, or one of us will bring it to the attention of the body. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to be brief, a couple of items that weren't covered by my colleagues. I attended the vector mosquito abatement and vector control board about a week and a half ago. The weather's warming up, and they've identified two ticks from San Clemente, so keep an eye on the warm weather, especially when you're on the brush. Not a major problem, but was surprised to see that we actually had some reported ticks here. In addition to the San Clemente Day, we had the ribbon cutting for the Pier Pride's donation for the bike racks, the aquatic-themed bike racks down at the pier. Beautiful, beautiful pieces of equipment. Everyone will be enjoying those. Victor, you mentioned the Marine 2-1 Dining Inn Ceremony that the mayor emeritus, Wayne Eggleston, and I attended. Very well, very well done, great event. And yesterday, our new state senator had a brief meeting to sort of announce his goals for his senatorial district, and a number of my colleagues were there for that meeting. And that's all I have, and thank you, gentlemen, for that report.
I forgot one other thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was out there the other day, the donkey, our donkey is here in town, the goats are here in town.
I think we're going to have a report on that during oral comments, I believe.
Well, we might, hopefully we will, but we've gone out and visited him, and the newspaper was there the other day and did a nice report on that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And the donkey named Steve, I understand he's been renamed Mayor Steve, so it may be appropriate, but I don't know. Oral comments, do we have any oral comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do.
Would you read the names, please?
Tyler Bowden, followed by Wayne Eggleston, followed by Mike K.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tyler Bowden, resident of San Clemente. It's good to see you all, it's been a while since I've been in. Coming in tonight because Mayor Emeritus Wayne Eggleston asked me to come in and speak. I think he'll be speaking a little bit about the city's support for Marines and the Marine Corps here at Camp Pendleton, and he asked me, just in my capacity, being a board member for the Chamber, just to talk about the annual barbecue that we do in partnership with the city for 2-4, the 2nd Battalion, 4th Marines. It's a great event every year. Fisherman's helps out a lot in providing the food for that. The city, I think, contributes $17,500 for that barbecue. The Chamber's very happy with that event. We want to continue doing that, so we don't anticipate any changes in the future as far as budgets concerns for that event, and we look forward to continuing to do that. I think Wayne's comments are probably going to be more about looking to get city support for other Marine efforts. Obviously, Wayne is a dynamo when it comes to Marine support in San Clemente, and he may be here forever, I don't know. It's possible he may be here forever, but he may not, and so I think we should all be considering how we can fill the big shoes that Wayne has built, so thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Good evening, Wayne Eggleston. You know, when I, way back when, the Chamber was involved with a lot more activities than just the barbecue, and I just recently found out that they're going to be focusing on the barbecue, but that leaves a void. But before I get to that, I want to announce that Park Semper Fi is going to be celebrating our 20th anniversary this year. On Memorial Day, we're going to be partnering with the Exchange Club, and Veterans Day, we'll be partnering with the Marine Corps League. I want to thank you for your support of the Marines since 1996, when we adopted 2nd Battalion, 4th Marines. Inasmuch as the Chambers, I've just been finding out that scaling back more of their activities with involvement for 2-4, that's going to leave a void. They've done a terrific job with barbecues, no one else could have done better, but the void needs filling. Plus, the military federal cutbacks will have an impact on Marine welfare. Let me share with you a recap of what's happened at Park Semper Fi in 2024. The commanding officer of 2-4 approached us and asked us to fund and sponsor a dining in mess night for them before their deployment. We did that in May at Casa Romanaque, we raised $24,000. Now, some of you attended that. By the way, we did not ask for any support for the city at that time. Over the last seven 2-4 deployments, the Heritage has collected deployment goodies, mailed 65 boxes each time overseas. The city paid for two mailings, we paid for five mailings for the overseas postage. The Heritage became involved with 2-1 when they lost nine Marines and one sailor at Afghanistan at Abbey Gate. The San Clemente became aware of 2-1 when 1,500 residents in San Clemente marched from Avenue to Del Mar down to Park Semper Fi for an impromptu ceremony. The Heritage Park Semper Fi, we sponsored a plaque at, and we perhaps could show that, the plaque at Park Semper Fi commemorating their loss at, in Afghanistan. Two weeks ago, at 2-1, we did a dining, which you mentioned, for another mess night dining in, and that was at Bella Colina. Park Semper Fi, the Heritage, raised 80% through sponsors. We still are in short and still need funding for that. So I'm requesting the city council tonight to increase the funding from $17,000 a year through discretionary general funds for 2-4 and approved battalions north at Camp Pendleton, and direct the city manager to fund with his financial approved limits for Marine needs as they are requested. However, the largest percent total should always go for 2-4. Just a perspective, for example, the $17,000, which is annual for the Marines, is very low, by the way. It accounts to $1.70 per Marines at, for 2-4. That's very, very minimal. 2-4 Marines and other battalions from north Camp Pendleton volunteer for many civic organizations here in San Clemente.
Thank you, Wayne.
So we really need to open up our hearts for Marines here in San Clemente. Thank you so much.
City managers, a quick question. So I know that the Chamber didn't have the funds to help out like they usually do, and I know our contribution to the Marines has been much higher in past years. Is this something that we can possibly do? Is, I mean...
Well, I think we can instruct the staff to do that. I was planning on doing that at the end, when we look back for reports in the future rather than address it during public comments, but it does need to be addressed.
Okay, so you can bring it up.
I definitely was planning on doing that, so I will. Thank you, Rick. Next speaker, please.
Mike K. Mike Kay.
On a lighter note, just wanted to check in and give you an update on the, on our goats, on our wonderful mini Sicilian donkey, Mayor Steve, and on our two sheep. They have started grazing, it's very exciting for us. We have completed the construction of the enclosure, and we've got electric fences out there. We have gotten them used to eating thistle. I've been cutting down thistle and throwing it over the fence for over a week now, and they're, they like the thistle. So we're moving right along, educating folks as they walk their dogs and come by, and that's a big part of it out there. It's a, it's an exposed location. City Manager Hall picked that intentionally, and I followed through with that, a lot of discussions, a lot of buy-in, a lot of interest by the community, seems to be well received. Very, very exciting time. Started to locate some, meet up with some volunteers who'll help watch the goats while they're out there. So it's, things are, things are moving right along. The rains were late, and the growth is, is late, I think, as we all are aware, but it's, it's growing, and it's out there, so it's actually kind of perfect time, in an environmental sense, for getting the, the goats out there. So yeah, things kind of moving along, I'm excited, expect things to be done in roughly 60-plus days, depends on the rain and the weather. It's something I'd like to pursue and continue, I'd like to expand it if possible, we'll see how it kind of plays out, we'll finish this project up, but I just want to let you know that I'm, I'm positive on it, I don't necessarily want to just leave in 60 days, there's an option potentially, in my mind at least, to kind of go, we'll see how that all plays out. But yeah, yeah, things moving along, all systems go, everybody seems pretty happy. So, anyway, I would encourage you guys to stop by, a couple of you have, three of you have not, would love to have a couple, three of you guys stop by and check it out sometime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kay. Thank you for what you're doing, appreciate it. The next item, can I have a motion waiving the reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Any items need to be agendized for immediate action? Hearing none. Next item is a closed session report from the city attorney.
Thank you, the council met in closed session on item A, there was direction given and no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Staff Communications, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report? Okay, the next item is public hearings. This hearing is a continuation of the public hearing on the consideration of a resolution implementing a deposit fee for the golf tee time bookings. We have a public hearing, do, are there speakers that-
There are no speakers, and staff is requesting to continue this item to the meeting of March 18th.
Okay, do we have a motion to continue that item to March 18th?
March 18th.
Do we have a motion for the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's approved, thank you. Next item is unfinished business, consideration of resolution authorizing the acceptance of $1.8 million grant for a clean mobile option voucher pilot program for the 2023 Mobility Project voucher authorizing execution of Mobile, Mobility Project voucher agreement and finding the project statutorily exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. This was on our agenda last week, we've all read the report, so I don't know that we need a staff presentation per se unless the council members would like to hear it, but do you have any questions or issues?
I don't, I, I think that, you know, between, I mean, we, we had it on consent last time, and Mark was going to move it. I think we've been able to get some, some compromise with them, and it's a much, much better deal than we had before, so I, I'm, I'm in favor of it, and I think-
I'll entertain a motion unless there are any questions of staff.
Excuse me, Mayor, Mayor, we do have one speaker card.
Okay, I didn't think there were any, but let's hear from the public speaker.
Amanda Quintanilla.
So, hello, council members. So this, I understand that this grant is intended to support a four-year pilot program for a city trolley. This is a shuttle service in the Maxford Park area from Rancho San Clemente Business Park. However, it encompasses more than that, it's Valencia, North Beach, to Rancho San Clemente Business Park. And I have some concerns regarding the city's cost of $534,000 that has to be paid in 2029. When listening to the February 7th and February 21st, 2023 city council meeting, both Representatives Paul Simons and Mr. Bautista from Kurt Pringle and Associates mentioned that there would be no cost at all to the city of San Clemente, and I have the audio for that as well, but my concern is that why is this not presented to, by Mr. Lightfoot, the city staff, and our city manager, because, you know, this is a, a concern, why was it presented as one thing that it's not going to cost us anything, and then now it is possibly, I mean, why is this on the agenda as $534,000, and why wasn't it updated if there has been any changes? It's my understanding that, that it has changed, but that has to be changed, and I want people to understand that. At the last city council meeting, I wasn't able to attend this, on this agenda item or speak about it, but it was Councilmember Cabral that mentioned problems with traffic around the Maxford Park area, and there is a concern raised previously because of the Las Palmas Elementary School, and there are concerns regarding the buses, you know, kids being dropped off, picked up in that area. One of the problems that I've seen is that the crosswalk, people take a little bit more time to socialize, and sometimes it leaves a big, huge line of cars going down on Avenue de Aragon, and I've seen that, so it's like turning around, it's like, nope, I'm not going down that street. So, you know, so it is concern about traffic in the Maxford Park area, and I understand this is supposed to be for the benefit of those who have financial difficulties to make it easier, more accessibility, but there is, I know it's going to be studied, but there are concerns regarding the cost, and then after four years, I think it was Councilmember Wu who raised the issues about how much this was going to cost us, and however, you know, after four years, these are not trolleys, these are kind of utility vehicles, and then I wonder how many, how much mileage is going to be on those cars, and pretty much, it's not going to be worth anything really at that point. But anyways, I hope to hear more from Jonathan. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we entertain a motion, Mr. City Manager, could you comment on the $534 cost issue that was raised?
Yes, we, we were able to further confirm, excuse me, we were able to confirm that the city's only cost would be the cost of keeping the vehicles charged. And so the, the program itself and everything associated with it, including the vehicles, would be at no cost to the city. Our only obligation, again, would be to keep the vehicles charged for use. We anticipate that would be less than $200,000 for the entire five-year period of the, of the program.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of staff?
I, I just want to make sure, because I think the original agenda had that bigger number, that maybe you could address any other changes so that, for the sake of transparency, so that the public knows that we made a better deal.
Sure. So regarding this program, there was a change to the program guidelines that occurred after the last publication of the report, and that allowed for the city to get reimbursement in the final year of the program. However, we had budgeted the full 1.8 million within the three years of operating, so we were able to connect with the program administrator, rework the numbers on that, and so the outlay will be also more clear for the public, that this vehicle will run at the exact same time as our red line trolley, so it'll be simplified in that way, and the cost will be reduced for the city. So this one screen shows that change from, and it affects the staff recommendation, so we are no longer requesting that $534,000 figure, but simply the $200,000 figure, which would go towards the electric vehicle charging. Those are the two changes.
Thank you.
So with, with, with that full disclosure, I'd move this item if-
I will second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, is that change to the staff recommendation that was just reported? Is that your motion?
With that adoption of the, the change.
Any discussion on the motion? If so, let's vote.
I, I'm sorry, I have Councilmember Lefler as the maker of the motion, you-
No, Mr. Cabral.
Voted, so do you want me to change it to Councilmember Cabral?
It doesn't matter.
I think, I think, I think I heard Mr. Cabral make the motion, Mr. Renmeyer made the second. Why don't we just, have we already pressed the buttons? If we haven't, let's have a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously, thank you very much. The next item is a, item new business, 10A, consideration of a resolution adopting a local hazard mitigation plan and update on the wildfire mitigation actions. And I think we've all read the staff report, so I think unless there, unless there are questions from council members of staff regarding this issue, are there any public speakers on this issue, Madam Clerk?
There are not.
Okay. Then unless there are questions of staff, would you like to-
I've had all my questions answered, I think we all have probably, so if there aren't any, I'll, I'll move the item.
Unless there's discussion, as the motion by Mr. Cabral-
Just to say, I'm, I'm excited to have this, and that the city knows that this has not been updated since, what, 2009, I believe, was when it expired, and last, last that date was 2004, so this is great that we're doing this, and that this also helps us with funding for FEMA and, and other things if we receive a natural catastrophe. So, well done on the work, very excited.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Adam, for being prepared. Yeah, appreciate it. Item 10B, this is a matter, consideration of a resolution approving a design for installation of a pedestrian refuge island, signage markings, red curbs at Camino Miracosta near Miracosta Park, and finding the environmental project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Interesting project, again, we've seen the staff report, rather than asking for a staff presentation, are there any public comments, Madam Clerk?
No public comments.
Unless my council members have questions of staff, or specific comments maybe they'd like to make, I'll entertain a motion if there, unless there are comments.
I move to adopt Resolution 2524, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Clemente, California, approving the pedestrian refuge island designer improvements, and finding the project categorically exempt from this, the California Environmental Quality Act under Class 1 of the State Secret guidelines.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously, thank you, gentlemen. The next item is the City Manager Compensation Review and Consideration Resolution, authorizing a Second Amendment to the employment agreement with the city manager, Andy Hall, implementing the exec, executive level salary adjustment. Again, this item, we have had discussions in closed session on this. Were there any public comments on this item, Madam Clerk?
No public comments.
Okay. Gentlemen, any-
We, we don't have a, a recommendate, a recommended number, we have to-
Well, that's what we're here for, do we have a recommended number?
I would, I would say 3%.
I agree with 3%.
Is that a second? Was that a motion?
It's a motion.
A second? Okay.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, there are a couple blanks in the resolution. So I'm hearing that motion is for a base salary of $306,311.21, which is a 3% increase, and that is a, an oral report that must be given by the city council before you make a decision.
Okay, do we need to re-agendize that then for-
No, you just need to make the oral report.
Okay, would you like to report on, I think, well, let me, let me make the report. We, in closed session, we, we analyzed the city manager's annual performance, and no, you're, you're shaking your head at me, Madam City Attorney.
So the government code just requires that you state orally what the, what the dollar figure is before you-
Okay.
Decide the motion.
You stated the dollar amount, that was the 3% that you intended, Mr. Cabral?
That's, that's exactly the 3%, 302 and-
33 cents. Could you repeat the number again, Madam City Attorney?
That's the, the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, and does that satisfy your concerns, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, that was the oral report.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, but just quick discussion, just saying, he, he has really done phenomenal work, and I think everyone up here is appreciative, how, you know, he has put his full heart into the city, and we appreciate it.
Great comments, I think we all agree, and we all appreciate his service to our city. Thank you. That, that matter passed unanimously, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
With no opposition. The consent calendar is next. Do we have items, any items that, there's public comments on any items?
We have a public comment on item 11D.
Okay, gentlemen, do you want to approve the remainder, or anyone want to pull any comments? Or any, any items?
Move, move the balance.
Okay, motion by Ms. Lefler, seconded by Mr. Cabral for the remainder, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, no oppo, no opposition. Item-
11D.
11D, as in David.
Correct.
We have a public comment on that?
Yes, Amanda Quintanilla, and I will just, for the record, read the, the title, consideration of four resolutions authorizing four submittals of grant applications for coastal projects.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Public Speaker, come right ahead.
This is just FYI. Basically, I was reading through the grants and about the rehabilitation project for the San Clemente Pier, and it's desperately needed, but if I'm going to be quite honest, I was really stunned about how it said in the staff report that it was a 100-year pier. It is not. Partially, it was destroyed in 1982 because of a storm, so, you know, when things like this are not done properly, there was another concern with another grant for the hotel for an increase in the height limit, changing the general plan amendment, and it's not even in the coastal zone, so how was that grant submitted to the Coastal Commission? And so I, I think that there's another grant as well that was put through, through the Coastal Commission, regarding the restoration of some stairs at 204, and that, those stairs had been closed for, forever. And there were some problems with the, the safety, there were safety concerns, and I brought that up year, many years ago. And so I'm just kind of pointing out that there, you know, that when things get submitted to the grant, for grants, that hopefully correct information, and that people will do some due diligence and kind of look at the history about that, because sometimes that gets lost. But there, it was a huge storm in 1982, and it destroyed the pier, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I would move the item.
Okay. Just let me confirm, no other speakers, Madam Clerk?
No other speakers.
I'll second.
The motion's been made in second, it's made by Mr. Cabral, seconded by Mr. Lefler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the Madam, the matter passes unanimously. The next item is the Oral Communications Part II. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We do not.
Okay, then the next item is item 13, I'm, I'm sorry, did you-
Yes, I had, just had it in my hand, I just didn't realize-
Okay, come right, come right ahead, come right ahead, thank you, I didn't see that.
I have a chance to go get some more of those, and I'll pop her.
Oh, I get it.
Okay, man, go right ahead.
So basically, I spoke in closed session about a transfer of property, or a potential real property regarding the TCA land, and one of my concerns is that this was a closed session item agenda, and it's a negotiation of real property, and per government code, it has to be in closed session. However, a lot of residents in Talega don't know that there is an irrevocable offer of dedication that was found by a couple, by a co-founder of the grassroots movement that I was involved with for, for years. And so the concern is that, let's be a little bit more transparent, and if this irrevocable offer of dedication rightfully goes to the city of San Clemente-
Excuse me for interrupting, this item was, was agendized, and you spoke to this item, I believe, at the beginning of the session, so this is a duplicated comment on the same topic, so-
Well, I'm just concerned about closed session deals, like such as the CDS San Clemente versus Caltrans, and that lawsuit, and that it was negotiated in closed session of $850,000. And then according to two city council members at the time, one, Mayor Gene James, was hit, had a, was concussed and couldn't remember, and then another city council member couldn't recall what had just been discussed in closed session. So my concern is that a lot of things are kind of happening in closed session without people knowing about it, and especially, you know, this, this, you know, this rightfully, this property should go back to Talega residents, to Talega maintenance- property should go back to Tolega residents, to Tolega Maintenance Corporation, Tolega Associations. I think that people should know, be aware of, and just be concerned about what's discussed in closed session, for people be aware that to look that, look on that in the agenda, because you never know what's going to be up there. And thank you so much.
Thank you. And your item, your comments did cover other matters, so I apologize for...
I was going to circle back, so I knew.
You did circle back, so, thank you, and I apologize for interrupting.
Mr. Mayor, just as a point, if I read the description of this litigation, the residents are a party to this.
That's very true. And the documents that were hidden are public documents. Everyone has a right to see.
So everybody knows what's going on.
Exactly.
Through their attorney.
Exactly. Next item is future agenda items. And Mr. Lefler, you had commented on the Marine issue, so this is, I was going to bring it up, but if you'd like to...
Why don't you go and take this one? I have another one, so I think you're...
Okay, Mr. City Manager, I think there's some interest, at least on the part of one or two council members, to look at our support for the Marine Corps historically. I think our support for our Marines was larger than it's been lately, and I think probably a very brief report on what our history has been and where we are now, and with giving the council option to modifying in one direction or another the support that we currently give for our Marines. So can we agendize that for our next meeting? Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Do we need a third for our report?
I think the reports, I've seen the report recently, so I know what the numbers are, but...
Okay, all right. Thank you. I don't have anything else. Mr. Lefler was going to, had the floor, so go right ahead.
Yeah, real quick, I think we can head off a problem here by looking at our election process again, and what I'm speaking about is we didn't talk about running for mayor when we have the mayor race when you're in a safe seat. And I think this could be problematic going forward. Let's say in two years, Zen and I decide to run for mayor, and one of us wins. Now we have an open council seat that we've either got to do a special election or appoint for. I think we really should close that into where if you, if you're sitting in a safe seat, you can't run, you can't run for mayor. Or unless you give up your city council seat, which means it would be at the election, they could be elected at that time. You just, you either have to run for mayor and give up your seat, in which time the electorate will appoint a person for that seat. If you win, great, you're mayor. If you lose, well, you lose. I just think, I see problems going forward, running for mayor in a safe seat, where if they win, we're going to have situations where we have an open council seat that now we've got to scramble and fill.
When you say a safe seat, you mean a seat midterm?
A midterm, a midterm seat, exactly. And I think now's a good time to do it, because we only have two members here who are in safe seats, and I don't know what your plans are, but we have three members that are going to have to either run for mayor or city council anyway. I just think it's a good time to address this so we're not caught in the future.
Yeah, I can second that.
Okay, let's agendize then for the next meeting.
I would give it a third, only so, I mean, with this understanding that we also look at all the other options that other cities are doing to address that issue, because other cities have probably had that problem, and what are the solutions they have for that?
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Any other items to agenda?
Yeah, one of the items that was on the agenda originally, item 10C, consideration of resolution approving classification changes for supporting departmental reorganization. It was item 10C that was removed. I'd like to put that back on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's back on the agenda.
There's already been a report, right?
There's also a report.
There's already been a report.
All right. I'm sorry, 10C, you're talking about the...
It was, it was on the original.
It was on the original 10C. It's, got it, got it. Okay. Is that clear, Madam Clerk and Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other items? Mark, any items? Zen? Okay, if there are no other items, I guess the next item is adjournment, so...
Commission and committee updates.
I apologize. Let me turn to the right page here. Do we have any committee and commission reports? Any council subcommittee updates? Madam City Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a report? There are two contracts I need to inform the city council about, CSI Services providing reservoir tank inspection and cleaning in an amount not to exceed $45,500. Nichols Consulting Engineers, CHDT, providing pavement management system updates in the amount of $56,806. That's it. Thank you, sir.
This is the first, I guess the city attorney isn't happy to work here anymore? Is that what the deal is?
I was surprised.
Give a briefer report, so that's the only way I could shorten it.
She is a dutiful lawyer, I tell you what. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn until the next regular city council meeting on March 18, 2025.
I'll second.
At closed session, beginning at 4:30?
Closed session will begin at 4:30 PM, and the regular business meeting will begin